Good afternoon. This, the ninth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Stephen Michael Smith from the Mount Mariah Baptist Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious God our Father, we thank you for allowing us to come here today. We thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made. You tell us to rejoice and be glad in it. We thankful for health, life, and strength. We thank you for allowing us to serve the citizens of this city. Now, God, we pray for your presence in this place. We pray for the agenda that has been set. We pray for this president and his council. Bless everyone in this room, and we will be able so careful to give your name the praise and the glory. We pray for unity, for oneness, for peace, for togetherness. We pray, God, for wisdom, understanding. Guide us now, O thou great Jehovah, for we are pilgrims in this barren land. We are weak but thou art mighty. Hold us now in the palm of your hand. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Smith? Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank Pastor Smith for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Clark. Mr. President, with a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Ms. Marceline White from Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition. Is she here? She's not here? Marceline? Okay. It is the Council of Customs Generalize the Invocation Act for motion, generalize the prayer, motion by Councilman Pickett, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The aye is heaven. Motion is adopted. Now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceedings from the April 3rd City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry the journal is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 one, A. Adair Ayayara, Member of Community Relations Commission, Tenth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 two, Sarah Heaton, Member of Community Relations Commission, Seventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 three, Carsonna W. Whitehead, Member of Community Relations Commission, Third District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 four, Dr. Sheridan Todd Yeardy, Member, Member Community Relations Commission.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 five, Stephanie M. Smith, Member of Community Relations Commission, Second District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 six, Stephen M. Rockman, Member of Community Relations Commission, Eleventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 seven, Adori Akui, Member of Community Relations Commission, Second District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 eight, Saidah A. Hamptonell, Member of Community Relations Commission, Fourth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero 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 nine, Dr. Philip H. Farfel, Member of Community Relations Commission, Eighth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one zero, Carrie L. Evans, Member of Community Relations Commission, Eighth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one one, John Barber, Member Wage Commission.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one two, Karen York, Member Wage Commission, Fourteenth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one three, Mark J. McLaurin, Member Wage Commission, Eleventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one four, Ally Amerson, Member Wage Commission, Eleventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one five, Shirley Wood, Member Wage Commission, Eleventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one six, Dr. Danielle Carter Kushner, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one seven, Blair Thompson, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one eight, Frederick Jackson, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero one nine, Dr. Melvin Carey, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA fifteen, EA seventeen dash zero zero two five, Dr. Bridal Pearson, Member Civilian Review Board.
Where you get that at? Where you get that at? Two five. There's no two five. There's no two five.
EA seventeen dash zero zero two zero, Dr. Bridal Pearson, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero two one, Danielle Williamson, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero two two, Leslie Parker Blythe, Member Civilian Review Board.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five zero, sale of property, block zero zero three five, a portion of lot zero zero eight, located in the rear of seventeen, fourteen oh seven and fourteen oh nine through fourteen eleven, Pressman Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, it is a public or private sale, all to interest in certain property known as block zero zero three five, a portion of lot zero zero eight, located in the rear of fourteen oh seven and fourteen oh nine through fourteen eleven, Pressman Street, and only for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five one, city streets, opening East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, for the purpose of condemning an opening East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, bounded by East Fayette Street, Asquith Street, East Baltimore Street, and East Street, as shown on plat two two seven A twenty-four, and the Office Department of Transportation, providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five two, city streets, closing East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, for the purpose of condemning a closing East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, bounded by East Fayette Street, Asquith Street, East Baltimore Street, and East Street, as shown on plat two two seven A twenty-four A, and the Office Department of Transportation, providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five three, sale of property, former beds of East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, it is a public or private sale, all to interest in certain parcels of land, known as the former beds of East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Asquith Street, bounded by East Fayette Street, Asquith Street, East Baltimore Street, and East Street, and only for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five four, franchise, brideway over Center Street, for the purpose of granting a franchise to M.D. six oh one North Calvert LLC, to use and maintain an existing elevated brideway that is located above and across Center Street, approximately one hundred and twenty feet east of Calvert Street, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five zero, franchise, parking lot with a chain link fence, and a portion of north, and a portion of the north side of the bed of Bass Street between Calvert Street and Guilford Avenue, for the purpose of granting a franchise to M.D. North Calvert Street LLC, to use and maintain an existing parking lot located in a portion of the north side of the bed of Bass Street between Calvert Street and Guilford Avenue, where the, where this parking lot adjoins the property of M.D. North Calvert Street LLC, and to use and maintain an existing chain link fence with a gate along the eastern, southern, and western boundaries of the parking lot, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five six, electronic control devices, authorizing possession in most circumstances, for the purpose of allowing a person to possess and use an electronic control device as a form of non-lethal self-defense in the home or in public, prohibiting a purpose, prohibiting a person from possessing and using an electronic control device in sensitive places, prohibiting a person who poses an unacceptable risk to public safety from possessing and using an electronic control device, prohibiting the sale of an electronic control device to persons who pose an unacceptable risk to public safety, establishing certain penalties, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generalating to the electronic control devices. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five seven, city streets, closing beds of two ten-foot alleys bounded by East Twentieth Street, North Chester Street, East North Avenue, and North Castle Street, for the purpose of condemning a closing of two ten-foot alleys bounded by East Twentieth Street, North Chester, North Chester Street, East North Avenue, and North Castle Street, as shown on plat one six one A sixty-three, Aiden Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five eight, city streets, closing a portion of West Twenty-Sixth Street, for the purpose of condemning a closing of a portion of West Twenty-Sixth Street, extending from the west side of North Howard Street, southwesterly three hundred and six feet, more or less, and southeastally for a variable width, as shown on plat seventy A thirty twenty A, and the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five nine, sale of property, block thirty four thirty-four, lots two and one, for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, it is a public or private sale, all to interest in certain property known as block thirty four thirty-four, lots two and one, and only for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six zero, rezoning one twenty-seven, one twenty-nine, one thirty-three, and one, one thirty-five, West West Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as one twenty-seven, one twenty-nine, one thirty-three, and one thirty-five, West West Street, as outlined on rednecks company plat, from the OR one zoning district to the TOD four zoning district. Sponsored Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six one, zoning condition use parking, open off-street area, forty-six oh three Paul Mall Road, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking, open off-street area on the property known as forty-six oh three Paul Mall Road, as outlined on rednecks company plat. Sponsored Middleton.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six two, zoning condition use conversion of one dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the OR zoning district, twenty-two sixteen Utah Place, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of one dwelling into two dwelling units in the OR zoning district on the property known as twenty-two sixteen Utah Place, as outlined on rednecks company plat. Sponsored Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six three, Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety, for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety, providing for the commission's composition, terms of office, meetings, quorum, officers, and rules of procedures, requiring the commission, in cooperation with Baltimore City Police Department, to develop annually a community, community interaction recommendations report specifying the elements of the report, and generalating to the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. Sponsored Scott, Costello, Dorsey, Burnett, Pinkett, Henry, Cohen, Clark, Riceinger, Snead, Schleifer, Middleton, Bullock.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise today to just say that this is about ongoing accountability and having our citizens involved in how policing is done in Baltimore. We know for the last few years, we've talked about the need for the increasing of citizen involvement in the development of plans to deal with how our police departments, one, going to better engage with its citizenry, but two, also how they're going to better protect our citizenry. And the only way to truly do that is to actually have them at the table together. The only way to truly do that is to also have the representation from the unions and the vanguard at the table together. This is not about the consent decree or being in competition with anything. This is about making sure that we have long-lasting policy that impacts the reform of our police department, because this is about when none of us are here anymore, when our police commission isn't here anymore, when our mayor isn't here anymore. We, it's our duty to make sure that these things are in law, because when you look at our city, you look at our state and our country, there are many a times that folks who are in office have said, this is why we're creating this thing, to make it happen this way, but it was never written in law. And if things are not written in law, no matter what agency it is, when it's not written in law, it does not have to be followed, it won't. Government agencies only respond to what they have to by law. And the only way for us to ensure that when we're long gone, to make sure that citizens will still be at the table and are discussing how their police department is going to work with them in their city to make their city safe, a city that has already this year seen a hundred and one murders, is to put it in law, to put it in writing, because that law, that commission, this commission is going to outlive all of us, not just our political careers, but it will outlive us in our physical sense as human beings. This is what this is about. We can talk about wanting Baltimore to have community policing, we can say that we're going to do community policing, but if the community's not truly involved in that discussion and in development of strategies, then we're just talking. It's time for us to stop talking, put it in writing, show the community that we're serious about having them involved, and that's what the creation is of this commission is about. I look forward to having discussions with my colleagues in the administration as we move forward on how we should flush this thing out and make it a reality, because this is needed. We are not going to solve the problem of violence in this city without involving the citizens, because that's who knows what's going on. That's just the truth of it. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six four, Commander of Days, Henrietta Lacks Day, for the purpose of declaring October fourth of each day to be Henrietta Lacks Day, and requiring the mayor to proclaim Henrietta Lacks Day on October fourth of each year. Sponsored Snead, Middleton, President Young, Costello, Henry, Dorsey, Burnett, Pinkett, Scott, Cohen, Clark, Riceinger, Bullock.
Chair, recognize, Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say this legislation is very important to me as a woman, because she was a family woman, and to know that her cells were used for, I say, for science, it just means a lot to us. So, thank you all for your support, and I hope you all are, will view the movie that's, that's out. So, thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero two two R, informational hearing, moving Baltimore to zero waste. For the purpose of requesting that representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Health Department, Baltimore City Public Schools, the Office of Sustainability, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and other city agencies involved with waste reduction efforts in Baltimore, appear before the city council, along with experts on zero waste efforts nationwide, to discuss the development of a zero waste plan for Baltimore that will advance sustainability, public health, and job creations. Sponsored Clark, Middleton, Costello, Dorsey, Pinkett, Henry, Scott, Bullock, Riceinger, Snead, Cohen Schleifer, Burnett.
Chair, recognize, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Zero waste. Let's take it through a quick trip. Everybody calls us, sees us, grabs us to say litter, illegal dumping, trash on the medians, do something about it. Do something about it. One of the things we need to do about it is zero waste. A lot of the products that we see out there, you can't recycle and reuse for anything. They live longer than the ocean will live and the sky will live. And so, first and foremost, part of this is about, we shouldn't be having these products in the city that's saying, do something about the litter. But then, you pick it up, somebody sweeps, somebody picks up, somebody puts it in a truck, it goes down, and it gets incinerated, creating pollution in the air that we know very well all about. Is that what we want to do with our trash that we finally pick up? No. Recycling is, not only creates six to ten times more jobs than incineration, it keeps the air clean, the way model cities using zero waste have done. So, this is, I hope, the beginning of making all the small pieces of pick-up litter, ban certain products that can't be recycled, don't burn the ones that can be reused and recycled, zero waste. So, other cities are beginning it, and I'll quote you about just one. It's, of course, Portland, Oregon. How would we do legislation if it weren't for Portland, Oregon? I don't think we could. But, they must be out there thinking of good thoughts all the time. They have begun this zero waste process and calculated that their early waste diversion efforts reduce greenhouse gas emissions by the equivalent of taking four hundred and thirty-eight thousand cars off the road in a year. If Portland can do it, and it always rains there, we can do it here in sunny Baltimore. And so, every little thing that we do now should always be trying to add up to zero waste. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. You can find the consent count in section A at the back of the agenda, is there motion to approve this consent count? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of approving the consent count, let's say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair, recognize, Councilman Schleifer.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to extend floor privileges to my special guest, Dr. Burt Miller.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving, all those in favor of sending floor privileges to Councilman Schleifer's guest, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Your guest may take the floor.
Mr. President and members of the council, I'd like to acknowledge a special constituent of mine, Dr. Burt Miller, who's one of those super volunteers that we all wish we had in our district. He always goes above and beyond for the entire community and ends up building things that really turn out to be tremendous resources and assets to the district. And that, one of his many accomplishments is that he had started what's known as the annual chumets burning in the northwest district. And this year was my first year as councilperson there. It was really a larger-than-life event, you know, it has collaboration from the Department of Public Works, the mayor's office, the council president's office, the fire department, the police department, and everybody really comes together for a tremendous community event. And as Councilwoman Clark had mentioned about, you know, legal dumping and things all, you know, being dropped throughout our districts, you know, the fifth district is pretty clean. Might not be as clean as Councilman Scott's district, but it's a close second. And so, we, we strive for that, and at this annual chumets burning, we have a spring cleanup for the entire area. And this year, when leaving, I found over, over ten dumpsters full to the top. And what that tells me is that if we didn't have these dumpsters there, they would be littered all across the district. And so, you know, it's, it's efforts that had started over thirty-five years ago by Dr. Miller, which now lead to tremendous events that we have that brought out, I think, close to ten thousand people this year. So, I want to thank him for that, and I'll read off the proclamation that we've made for him. So, on behalf of a grateful district, I, Yitzhak Schleifer, Baltimore City Councilman, would like to honor Dr. Burt Miller in recognition of thirty-six years ago, long before environmental protection awareness and public safety were at the forefront of our daily lives, Dr. Miller started the annual chumets burning. He took it upon himself to streamline the burning of the chumets in a controlled environment. Thank you for your decades of leadership, and thank you for not burning plastic. Thank you.
We will now move the bills to second reading. Chair, recognize, Councilman Henry.
Move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of short reading for the remaining of the hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two five, city property renaming a trail.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing on this on April fourth. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Burnett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero three three, building code correcting definition of high-rise building.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on this bill on April fourth. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill seventeen, City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero one zero R, investigative hearing, Baltimore City Police Staffing, Recruitment, and Retention.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on April fourth. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman, Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero one five R, investigative hearing, water billing.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on March twenty-seventh and then voted it out subsequently on April fourth. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 seven, zoning condition use parking, off-street garage, one thousand South Elwood Avenue.
Chair, recognize, Councilwoman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair, recognize, Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments. They're on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair, recognize, Councilman.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two one, Baltimore City Zoning Code Legislation Corrections, Legalization Corrections.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Riceinger.
Yeah, Mr. President, on this bill, it's basically technical amendments that were typos through the, through the whole process. And the packet of amendments are on my colleague's desk, and at this time, I'd like to move amendment number seven of the committee amendments packet.
This motion fails for lack of a second. Chair, recognize, Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move the remaining committee amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of adopting these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair, recognize, Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, there's two set of floor amendments, they're on my, they should be on my colleague's desk. President, I move the two sets of floor amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. These amendments are adopted. Chair, recognize, Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 seven R, reviving the Baltimore Police Cadet Program.
Chair, recognize, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, the Public Safety Committee held a hearing on this resolution a few weeks back. We were pleased to hear from both the administration and the police department that the Baltimore Police Cadet Program would be reinstated, and we look forward to working with them to make sure that we get as many young people involved and employed as possible, especially focusing in on our police explorers. Thank you. Mr. President, with that, I would like to move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Third reading to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one five, planning new development designation in the Fox Building.
Third reading for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0022, City Streets Closing Bed of Duker Alley. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer Middleton Pinkett, Burnett Block, Reisinger Costello, Snee Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. Committee announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my colleague's desk is a tentative schedule for the fiscal 2018 budget. These will be formally announced at the next council meeting on May 8th. Please note that there will be two hearings on Tuesday, May 16th, starting at 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. respectively. The first will be a third quarter budget overview done under the authority of 17-0003R and 17-0004R, followed by the budget overview. Then the following evening at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 17th, we will have Taxpayers' Night for the city council and chambers. And then the normal budget process will start on Tuesday, May 30th for the following four days through Friday, June 2nd, pardon me, starting at 9:00 a.m. each day. Mr. President, Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2000, oh, pardon me. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Burnett, all those in favor of suspending rules and announcing a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 2nd at 10:00 a.m. on Bill 17-0056, Electronic Controlled Devices Authorizing Possession in Most Circumstances. This is at the request of Council President Young on behalf of the administration. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:00 a.m. on Bill 17-0014R, Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee at the request of Councilman Costello. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:05 a.m. on Bill Number 17-0046. This is City Property Renaming Harlem Dennison Park to be the William Donald Schaefer Park at the request of Councilman Burnett. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0019 on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:10 a.m. This is Bike Lanes, Increased Parking Penalties at the request of Councilman Costello. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0045 on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:15 a.m. This is naming an unnamed 15-foot lane located in the vicinity of Williams Street and Beechwood Avenue as Unity Lane at the request of Councilman Burnett. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending the rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 16th at 10:00 a.m. on Bill 17-0022R. This is an informational hearing moving Baltimore to zero waste at the request of Councilwoman Clark. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snee.
The Labor Committee will hold a hearing for Council Bill 17-0048, Labor and Employment Displaced Service Workers Protection on Thursday, May 18th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, in the chambers, beginning at 10:00 a.m. to review the following nominations for Community Relations Commission. We have Adar Ayira, Sarah Heaton, Crostana Whitehead, Dr. Sheridan Todd Yeri, Stephanie M. Smith, Stefan M. Ruckman, Adote Akway, Saeda A. Hampton-L, Dr. Philip H. Farfel, Carrie Evans. For the Wage Commission, we have John Barber, Karen York, Mark J. McLaurin, Ally Amerson, and Cheryl Wood. And for the Civilian Review Board, we have Dr. Daniel Carter Kushner, Mrs. Blair Thompson, Mr. Frederick Jackson, Dr. Melvin Curry, Dr. Bridal Pearson, Mrs. Danielle Williamson, and Leslie Parker Blyther. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcement on this side? Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is that time of the year again. Four months will be passed before our next council meeting, so the Public Safety Committee will hold a legislative oversight on Tuesday, May 2nd at 4:00 p.m. We'll be again holding this quarterly meeting on the Baltimore City Police Department's plan to combat violence in the city of Baltimore. Also, that day, Tuesday, May 2nd, the Public Safety Committee will hold its first quarterly hearing with the Baltimore City Fire Department's plan for their plan for fire safety in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 4th at 5:00 p.m. at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, located at 1400 Orleans Street. This hearing is being held as, for the purpose of investigating resources for victims of human trafficking. We know that human trafficking in our city and state is a significant challenge, especially for young people. There's been a recent case that we've received several calls about, about a young person being trafficked from Baltimore, and so our committee hopes to address that issue, bring together advocacy groups, and I also want to thank Councilman Burnett for a heavy lift that he's put into this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 17-0030 Thursday, May 11th at 10:00 a.m., and it's the Tax Credit Citywide High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing, the extension of the eligibility. Also, I need a motion to suspend the rules to announce a public hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 17-0059 on Thursday, April 27th at 10:10. It's the sale of property, block 3434, lots 2 and 1, which is also known as 800 West North Also, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 17-0023 on Thursday, April 27th at 10:15 a.m. It's the sale of property, map 70, grid 14, parcel 988 in Baltimore County, also known as 219 Burke Avenue, Towson, Maryland. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 17-0024 Thursday, April 27th at 10:20 a.m. It's sale of property, map 70, grid 14, parcel 988 in Baltimore County, again, also known as 219 Burke Avenue, Towson, Maryland. And Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will also hear City Council Bill 17-0036 on Thursday, April 27th at 10:25, sale of property, the former bed of West Trenton Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. First, I would like to wish Council Vice President Milton an early happy birthday. Her birthday is May 1st.[1105.08][1105.08](APPLAUSE). The city council choir will now sing "Happy Birthday."[1114.33][1114.33](LAUGHING). Yes, you can.
Correction.
I was waiting for the city council choir to sing.[1124.23][1124.23](LAUGHING).
A typographical error on one of the bill hearings. So, again, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 17-0024 on Thursday, April 27th at 10:20, and it's, again, City Council Bill 17-0024, not 23, and it's 301 Warwick. Again, 301 Warwick.
Thank you. Our Minister of Music has something to say? Oh, Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't mean to be a killjoy, but I mentioned it earlier in my remarks about the piece of legislation, but I just wanted to hone in on the fact that we stand in today in April, and we've had 101 homicides in the city of Baltimore. This is not normal. We shouldn't, no one in the city should feel like this is normal and this is how life should be in the neighborhoods across our city. This is actually the first time in two decades that we've reached this number this quick. So, think about that. Even in the big bad 90s, these kind of things did not happen. So, all of us have to do some soul searches and looking to see what we can do better to help our city, to help the people that are out there, to help these communities where people, young children are, seeing this each and every day, where they're seeing members of their families shot almost each and every day, when we're having pregnant women killed in our city, when we're having 90-year-olds shot over chicken bones in our city. This is not normal. So, if you're, people, if we're all sitting at home comfortable, then you're part of the problem. We can't be commenting on Facebook and tweeting 140 characters about what someone else is going to do. We have to first start and look at yourself. I know that's how I think of myself each and every day. What can Brandon Scott do to make Baltimore a safer place? And that's true not just for the 15 of us in here and the 17 elected officials in this building, but also for everyone under the sound of my voice in the city of Baltimore. So, thank you. And with that, I also would like for Councilman Milton to honor a moment of silence for those 101 victims.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Scott, I've been speaking out against this murder rate for years now, and what I've said to many people, they all know who's doing the murders, they all know who's doing the killings, because some of them are their kids, their grandkids, their nieces, their nephews. And this stop snitching culture in the city of Baltimore have to stop. It's really not a good thing to not report that kind of things, but most of the citizens say that they don't report it because there's no protection for them. But my whole take on that is that if you know that your son is driving an $85,000 car and he don't have a job and you didn't pay for it, that's a problem. So, I hold everyone accountable. Grandparents, uncles, aunts, cousins, nieces, because they know who are doing these killings, and they need to sit down and have a real conversation with their family members that murders affect every family. And if someone would murder you, we would feel just like that person, who, son or daughter you killed, felt. So, in order for us to curb this thing, we as a community have to really dig deep and start turning our own relatives in. That's the way we're going to solve it. So... Chair recognizes, before you do that, I want to get these resolutions to these two fine young men who are on their way after graduation to colleges. The City Council Baltimore Resolution, bid here my known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Craig Minor Jr. in recognition of your completion of great services as a city council page. The city of Baltimore is thankful for your job. Well done. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and I direct this resolution to be presented on this 24th day of April. Resolution 0354, Council President and all members.[1387.41][1387.41](APPLAUSE). And the second one reads the same, and it's for Louis Lawrie. So, I'll come down and present it, and I'm going to ask council members to come up so We're going to miss you guys, but we're going to make sure we check up on you, because we do check up on some of our interns to find out how they doing in college. Okay, Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
I just wanted to invite everyone out. One of the projects that I've been working on here on the council is creating a community academy, and I thought it was very, you know, telling that we're talking about reporting, because on, this Wednesday, April 26th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Gwinnett United Methodist, I'm hosting a District 8 Community Academy on 911 and 311, how the systems work. So, we have people coming from dispatch, from the fire department, and from code enforcement to, one, encourage people to use all of these services, but also break down some barriers and understanding about, you know, how calls are dispatched to police officers, because we hear a lot, people don't call because they think it, you know, takes too long for the officers to get there, or that no one's, no one's hearing them out. And so, I'm bringing dispatch to the community to explain to people exactly what the problems are, so that they can ask those questions directly. But it's open to anybody across the city if you want to come on out. It's also on my website, bemoredistrictgate.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We have incredible people contributing to the arts all across Baltimore City, and I thought it'd be a good idea to acknowledge some exceptional folks, also because the third district has had an exceptional month for this. And I want to invite others to acknowledge and participate in the things that are happening in the arts community around Baltimore City. So, I want to acknowledge Deborah Rudisil, a science writer who was a recipient of the Guggenheim Fellowship this year, third district resident. There are over 3,000 applicants annually to the Guggenheim Fellowship from across the U.S., Canada, Latin America, and the Caribbean, and about 175 awarded annually. So, we're fortunate to have four from the Baltimore City area awarded this year. Third District Resident Makita Ahuja was one of the seven finalists announced today for the 2017 Janet and Walter Sondheim Prize. That's a $25,000 prize that's given out in Baltimore City to exceptional artists. The work of these finalists will be on display at the Walters Art Museum, June 17th through August 13th. I encourage all to go and see this incredible work. And sometime before March 11th, 2018, go and see Chris Bathgate, third district resident. Chris Bathgate's work, his solo exhibition entitled Reinvention at the Baltimore Museum of Industry. Thank you for letting me announce that.
Thank you. Council Vice President Milton, add Terry Coleman, the sister of Robert Stokes. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also add, in the conversation, that you and Councilman Scott, you know, about, I guess, reporting, it's also important to try to keep our children and young people engaged in community activities, and just want to quickly do a shout-out that within my wonderful neighborhood of Southern Park Heights, they started a Park Heights Baseball League called, and they're called the Black Sox, and it's free to anyone in the city. And so, you can bring your children over there to C.C. Jackson. If you want more information about that, please call my office. The uniforms, everything are for free. So, it's things like that that, you know, will help get us through the spring/summer months. We need, I would like to give a moment of silence for Terry Coleman, which is the sister to our colleague Councilman Robert Stokes. Also, a moment of silence to the family of Mrs. Marion Patterson that passed away last week. She's the widow of Dr. Roland Patterson, which was the first African-American superintendent of schools in Baltimore City. And I think then it was Greenspring Middle School that she fought and helped to rename. And also, she was instrumental in the Connect program at Morgan State. So, and then, also, Councilman Dominic Leoni was killed this month at City Hall, so we continue to reach out to his family. And then, of course, the 101 prayers for the 101 family members who have experienced deaths through the homicides of this city.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the ninth meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.